So it's you and me.
I might be having difficulties. I have a retor, a rotator.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it's often pretty sore.
I bet.
So I'll go in tomorrow to find out. What they want to do about it.
Who are you speaking?
I'm just going to our, I don't know who they're going to have next.
All right, I've got nine fifty-eight. We are assembled here. I'm going to open this up early. And note for anyone now or subsequently reviewing this meeting that David Khan is absent away on an emergency unexpectedly. And we have, we can start with the folks that are with us in the room for public comment. Phil.
Yeah, I had two things. One is, last meeting, there were a couple of abatements on the agenda. And also, I brought up the issue about one fifty-five River Road and whether those several properties were being assessed at full market value rather than at the equalization ratio. Don't see an update to that on the agenda, so.
There, we don't, last that I knew, we didn't have an update on that, but Donna's showing. Dina, whoever you are.
You have an abatement form I filled out, and then I was going to give you the answer.
Okay.
And that, yes, the equalization ratio is factored in, but it's not the only.
Oh, clearly it's not the only thing.
Okay.
The second question was, I have noticed that we're continually doing emergency repairs on road, road and culvert issues. And I'm just wondering, is it time to think about a roads committee again and doing some kind of ordered idea of what is deteriorating at what rate? And when the town might want to plan on sort of more proactive than reactive repairs? That question I thought was worth people thinking about.
Somehow, when did I hear, did you bring that up at the last meeting as well? Because sometime in the very recent past, someone else suggested that we reform the roads committee, so.
No, we're just talking about River Road falling into the riverway.
Yes, I've got that. Don Cutter would be so tickled if you were with us. Okay.
Well, and I should just say, the last few emergency repairs were not because of age. They were because of washouts from the storms, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know when we moved to Seattle, so.
Yeah, if you happen to have a news feed on your computer or your phone, you would have seen in the southern part of the state, pictures of huge washouts and huge floodings. And it's, it's like having a hurricane or a windstorm. It just, there is not much planning for that.
Yep.
And you have a couple of people on.
Okay.
I have nothing today, thank you.
Okay. And let's see, I cannot remember your name, young man.
I'm Andrew. I'm just here to listen.
Andrew, okay. Thank you. And Dina, who's up from our Zoom?
We have Jackie Carter.
And Ms. Carter, did you wish to speak, or are you here just listening as well?
I'm just waiting for the, my agenda item to come.
Okay.
And then you have Beth Taylor.
Ms. Taylor?
Guess she doesn't want to say anything.
They're muted.
And then Judy, I know they can unmute themselves, though. Judy.
Tim Chula, yeah.
I love that name, Tim Chula.
Thank you. I'm just listening today, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and Beth has her hand up.
Oh, Beth, name, would you wish to speak?
She wants to speak, Beth.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. And I couldn't unmute myself fast enough, thank you.
Okay, I know how that is.
And then Emma Rothwell's from the Valley News is on, too.
Oh, okay. Emma, did you have a question, or are you just writing another story?
I'm just writing another story.
Okay.
And then I have a phone number. There's no identification of the person, so.
We have one more person on. If you wish to identify yourself and speak, you may do so.
That's my mother.
Oh, okay. Jackie's mother. All right, then, moving right along. It's not ten fifteen, that's it, good. Okay, we have minutes to review and approve from May twenty-seventh, public session minutes. What do we wish to do with those, Ben?
I'm open.
And I will second them. Do we have any changes to them? I do not.
I don't.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Ben, aye.
And Judy, aye. They are approved. Then, we have non-public session minutes. And I'm going to move them, and along with that motion, I'm also going to move that they be sealed.
I'll second them.
Okay, thank you, Ben. All those in favor say aye.
Ben, aye.
And Judy, aye. So Dina, make a note that those have been approved and sealed. Thank you. Thank you. And, let's see, Ben, we have a manifest which we received, I think, yesterday.
I'll move it.
Okay, and I will second it. And it is in the amount of forty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty cents. And all those in favor say aye.
Ben, aye.
And Judy, aye. Then, we have a memo from David Robbins. It's at this point probably about a month old. And a little more than that. And it concerns an underground propane tank which was installed without a permit and is installed where presently violates ours' zoning ordinance in the wetland water body setback. And do we wish to, do you wish to speak to this issue, Mr. Brown?
I've not seen David's memo. I spoke to him briefly, and he said it just is pointing this out.
Yep, it is. I will give you a copy of that. You're welcome. So we can revisit this if you want. Or you can scan that. We've got Scotty coming in in about five or six minutes, but.
So did you say that David was going to be coming in, or?
I don't think so.
Oh, okay, right.
I'm thinking of the memo, thinking that would suffice.
The board just needs to make a decision.
Yeah, we need to make a decision, but we wondered if you wished to speak to this issue.
Very much so, yes, thank you. At the, at the public hearing for the petitioned amendment, let's see, I don't know that you know the full history. I made a silly clerical error that caused the exact wording of the amendment not to be useful to anybody, and certainly not to me. And so, that, it made sense to vote that particular wording down.
Right.
At the public hearing, Michael Hinsley gave a very reasoned, thoughtful approach that said that basically, it is completely sensible to have buried propane tanks pretty much anywhere in town, as long as there's a special exception that gives the fire department a chance to review the installation and, and say whether it's proper. To say whether it's correctly done. He points out there are national standards for propane installations in any situation. And that they, the fire department, would review the proposed installation. And if it passed muster, they would then be in support of granting the special exception. So the planning board declined to rewrite the amendment on the spot in that mo, in, in that particular meeting. And so, they left it up to be addressed potentially at the next town meeting. I completely support that. I think that I tried to get in contact with the fire department on numerous occasions, and there was just a lot happening that, that caused it not, not to happen. I would, I would strongly support another reworded amendment that said that there's, that requires a special exception. And so, at this point, I would ask the board if they might continue to give an avance on the enforcement on my particular tank. The question then is, how does the, how does the ordinance get changed? And I think there was some, some motion that the planning board could take that up and put something together that met the town's needs, as of course, and my needs as well. And so, that would be the, the request, that the planning board seems to want to do that, and so.
And so, your take on the planning board is that they would be in favor of it and that they would work on it this year to try and have an amendment for next town meeting?
Right, I wish David were here, because he, he was pretty, pretty thoughtful and clear that this seemed like a good, you know, given, I'm, I'm pointing back here because that's where Mike Hinsley was sitting.
Yeah, he always sits back there.
But he was, he seemed, Mike, Michael was quite persuasive that this is a good thing, and that in fact, above-ground tanks are far less preferable because cars can hit them, trees can fall on them, and, oh, and if there were a fire, it's contained. So, and I guess I will say, I would expect to have the fire department look at my installation and bless it, or if, if in fact, it was not, if it was, if it needed to be tuned up, of course, I would make it safe. And so, my, my request to the board would be that you, given that it's unlikely that the, that it, that the current tank is a problem, I would request that the continued avance of enforcement until the, we can come up with satisfactory language.
Okay, thank you.
My only question is, there's been discussion about having, should those tanks be anchored in the shoreline, just not just buried?
So.
So they don't pop up and.
I, I, that's a really good question. I do not specifically know whether there are, whether that's, it's anchored. My inclination would be to ask the fire department to take a look at it and determine what's required while I continue to use it in its current location. If it needs to be fixed, I'll fix it, in anticipation.
If it needs to be anchored, it might need to be dug up and proper.
And if that's, if that's what's necessary to make it correctly installed, that, it's clearly my obligation to do that.
I'm satisfied with that, as long as you're willing to do that.
Yeah, right, and so.
So, how about if I move that we grant the continuance on the condition that the planning board agrees to take up amendment language? And that Mr. Brown seeks to have Mr. Hinsley and Mr. Rich from the fire department look at his installation and try and determine if there's more that needs to be done, or at which point, Mr. Brown agrees to do what needs to be done.
If it needs to be anchored.
If it needs, yep. So I'll move.
I'll second.
Ben will second, and all those in, in Judy, aye. You are granted a continuance with two contingencies.
Thank you, thank you.
You are so welcome, thank you. And I do, I feel for you having the wrong site. It's so easy to do when you're citing our saying numbers, and you're all over the map. Probably everybody read the language, and nobody looked up the site to figure out if it was the right one or not.
And, and, you know, David was right to point it out, as much as it breaks my heart.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And that would be that, and that would be that, and we will let Mr. Robbins know. We have a ten fifteen appointment, it's ten fifteen, and our road agent, Scott Bailey, is here. Scott?
Well, there's a seat right there. We're missing something.
So, I have a tree on Marshman Hill that I need to cut.
Okay, is it hanging over the road?
It's rotten. I know the property owners have been arguing back and forth. I need permission to cut it because it's encro.
I'm going to give Scott permission to cut it?
There's two more beside it that are, they're broke off. I'm going to cut them myself, the pine tree. I gotta hire somebody to do it.
So you're cutting three altogether?
Three altogether.
Okay.
So one, one of the trees, or two of the trees you need to hire?
No, just one.
Just one? And that's the big rotten one?
Yeah, the big one.
Okay.
Which is not cheap.
Yes, I know.
And so can I clarify, your motion is for all three, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's what I said.
Well, he hadn't said three trees when you made your motion, so I just wanted to make sure.
For three trees and approve the, do you have a guesstimate on the expense of the one tree that's going to be professionally cut?
Thousand bucks?
Yep, that was, that number popped into my head.
That's just cut and left there.
By the side of the road?
Well.
Yeah.
You guys don't haul it off?
No.
Oh, it's on their property?
Their property owners.
So in.
It's one of those, I mean, it's. I know Dina, we couldn't find the actual layout, so, I mean, it's right side of the road, so. And it's on this side of the stone wall.
So it seems like it's on the owner's property?
No, it's on.
Oh, on town, the road, right away. Okay, so I have a question. The guy, professional is coming in, he's going to cut this big tree, it's going to be laying there. Can we ask the property owners if they want it, and if they don't want it? Or maybe we don't even need to ask that. Can we put it on listserv and say, anyone that wants it can come in and get it?
He said he'd take care of it.
Oh, okay, so you've already had that discussion?
Well, the guy works for it.
Okay. Yeah.
It won't get left there, is the point?
I don't think so.
Okay.
But if it, sometimes it does, then.
Well, if it's rotten, it's not good firewood anyways, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's hollowed away.
I was thinking you could probably burn it in a sugar house. But I don't, I am by no means a pro at sugar houses. I like the product that results. All right, I think you're good to go with that. And since you're here, and earlier before you came, we had a short discussion about a lot of work being done on a number of roads. Did we have actual washouts? Do we have from the rainstorms?
Uh, yeah.
Back up in the hills?
We just, the ditches won't dig it. I mean.
Yeah.
I did redo the ditch on Preston. I did redo it on the, I drive by Preston because the water's on the other road. And beyond my control.
Mother nature.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's very quirky these days.
The one on Wethville, the culvert was under there for last year, it never happened. I just come to the point where I won't fix it anymore, so we had to do it.
Yeah.
Preston, one of them was on hold for last year. But then, when it's up there green, when they roll, it, the culvert's rotten and it undermined the road, so it left to dig all. So I had.
Yeah.
No choice but to do it right down there.
But this, these weren't, these are washouts, and they weren't like the number of years ago.
No.
But all the roads in town disappeared.
Yeah.
I mean, I have no idea, I haven't even seen the bill. We held a bunch of stone. I quit using the four-inch, and I went with inch and a half. At least I can work with it in the ditch. Four-inch, you can't work with it. You put in the ditch, end up pulling dough, and somebody gets it and it's all. So. I'm just not, I'm just, there was a lot of question why I used a smaller stone on Preston. We've had some pretty good rains since then, and we've lost a little bit. But I can just bring it back up through it.
Excellent.
The grading, I mean, everything's fine, so.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
Yeah. I don't think anyone's complaining.
No, I'm just saying.
We just wanted enough.
I know it's fine.
Yeah, well.
I mean.
Me or homeowners are behind.
I, I.
Taking a hit.
I worked one weekend, just because it was nice weather, and it pinned around. And a few days later, then it just downed, and basically ruined everything I did, so it was just.
Frustrating, as I'll get out, yeah.
Yeah, I haven't rained any this spring.
No.
And I haven't gotten anything every other day.
So that's why, I mean, I couldn't grade, and that's why, I mean, I'd get them call backs, and. It's just, I second you all, and.
Well, okay, keep the faith. Then we'll probably have two months of hot, dry weather. Everything will be dusty and.
Down to our droughts, down to our droughts.
I know.
Are you guys wanting non-public later?
Yes.
I'd like to come back for.
Okay.
Non-public.
I'll text you, I'll be texting.
Dina will send you a text.
Yeah.
I think we've got.
Not very much.
Not very much to go, so it might be fifteen minutes.
Okay. I will win.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. We have, up next is Pike House information, discussion and vote. Our packet did not have a printout of a draft letter. But did you see the draft letter and the information that Dina sent out? Yes.
No, go ahead.
And we have Andrew and his mom Jackie and her mom. If any of the three of you wish to speak briefly about the issue, which is what are we going to do with the Pike House? Now's the time, because I think then Ben and I will reference a letter and make a decision. Andrew?
I'm just.
You just want to list?
Just waiting to hear what's going on.
Okay, Jackie?
I don't have anything to add, but if there was a letter, I, I haven't seen it. I don't know if it was sent out, but I, I haven't seen it.
It was not sent out. It's a draft, and it was not sent out.
Gotcha. I don't have anything to add, and just, we've been in limbo for a long time, so I'm just ready for it to be done.
Okay, very good. And Jackie's mom?
My mom's sister is also on the call as well.
Jennifer Carter is also on the call.
Oh, Jennifer Carter is also on the call. I did not know that.
I didn't either.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Do you wish to speak?
I don't have anything to add. I think, I think between the public hearing and such, our feelings have been noted.
Crystal clear. Okay, so, Ben, we have a draft. We've actually seen two different drafts, but the latest one to come out. And instead of waiting for David to come back, I know that he worked on this draft, and he felt strongly that it's the letter that should be sent. What do you wish to do with this item?
I'd say we move on, but I don't have it in front of me right now, but.
It's a letter that expresses regret for a decision that I believe we're going to take, noting that we support the efforts that you've made. We will be supportive if you find another house to relocate to, recommend you as a tenant. But that, at this point, we believe that the Pike House should remain available for town use and not be occupied as a rental house. That's a very brief paraphrasing of the letter.
Yeah, I got it here in front of me now.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a number of uses that will be put off if, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't pay to not proceed.
There are uses that are waiting for such a place.
They won't happen as long as.
And so, we also, Ben, I think it's ninety days or two, the end of the year. It's recommended if you need that length of time.
I don't think it's not the end of the year, but. Oops, sorry, your shoulder's not working. Oh, wait. Oh, yeah, ninety days, but you could, but December thirty-first of twenty-five, if she needs to.
Okay. I'll move that we extend it no longer than December thirty-first, but notify the occupants that the lease is not going to be renewed. I do believe we had, had that conversation earlier on more than one occasion, but we are now officially.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ben. Ben, second. All those in favor say aye?
Ben, aye.
And Judy, aye. Okay, and that is to end the tenancy at the Pike House, and it will be used by the town. Mr. Brown?
And so, the, the follow-on implication is that the town would retain ownership of that parcel?
Ownership, well, and it's not a separate parcel, it's a part of this parcel.
Uh, yes.
And.
And, and then it would be available for future use?
We already have several uses that.
Ah, okay.
Will be used.
All right, thank you.
And we will have this.
And I'll take this time to prepare the building for the uses.
Of course, right.
You're welcome. Okay, intent to cut?
No.
Did you look at these?
They all, they all look alright.
Okay.
I always chuckle because it, it has thousand board feet. Everybody seems to get messed up on thousand board feet.
Yes, they do.
This one writes a hundred thousand, thousand board feet, well, that's over a million board feet. And I know he doesn't mean a million board feet.
If he does, he's really lucky.
And sometimes we get two ton truck loads as a measure, a way of measuring it, so, anyways, these are, these are fine.
Tuller, out on Mud Total Pond Road, Hoodnut and Sheldon, Sheldon, out on Clover Mill Lane, Liggett, Isaac Perkins Road, and Hopper, and Pearlman on Route 10. All, I will move all of those.
I'll second them.
Thank you, Ben, all those in favor say aye?
Ben aye.
And Judy aye.
And this is a, a point, we don't really have the jurisdiction to decide what somebody cuts. It's about collecting the taxes on, on what this cut.
Correct.
Take track of it, so... You know, you don't get to go, oh, I don't want him to cut that one.
No, that's a good thing to say. Then, we get to reappoint Michael Hinsley, pardon me, and Jeff Hinesian as the help officer and the deputy help officer. I will move those appointments.
I'll second them.
And all those in favor say aye?
Ben aye.
And Judy aye. So they are reappointed.
And can you save that last one until after you talk to us?
Okay. In that case, I'm going to move us into non-public session in under 91A colon, no dash, three, Roman numeral two, little letter C, which I, is reputation. And I thank you all, I'm sorry you came up.
These are the resignation items.
That'll be after. After, yeah.
Okay.
But you can...
I can't answer that because I don't know what Scott wants to talk to us about.
Right.
But we do have a letter dated earlier from both of these people.
You can accept resignations with regret. But what I was gonna ask, but I'll just wait until after, so...
We will be accepting them.
Yes.
It, it's pretty hard to tie someone down and make them stay at a desk.
Yeah.